Yeah, 'cause if you, but if you don't, it freezes up on you and it's worse. 'Cause I actually have to get my shoulder done, too.
Good afternoon. We will call to order the February 2017 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. We'd like to welcome the Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. I would like to ask everyone who has a cellphone or a PDA to turn it to the silent or vibrate mode. The administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper?
Here.
Ms. Harts?
Here.
Mr. Stegemeier?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cohn?
Here.
Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. Waits?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Frost?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. The meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The consent agenda. Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion or vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. The administrator will now read the consent agenda.
Your consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the January 9, 2017 minutes, the annexation comprehensive plan map amendment for 24.13 acres on North Sunbelt Boulevard, also known as 115 Sunset, Sunbelt Boulevard, a site plan review for 1001 Bluff Road, and that would consist of your consent agenda.
Okay, one item I have, because we're approving, are we approving the minutes as well at this point in time?
Correct.
I noticed in reading them, when we approved an item at the last meeting, and maybe I just missed this, was there mention in there that the people, I believe, the toll group, were going, it was, it was brought up that they create a study or continue the traffic study, and also they were going to make provisions to make sure that students who crossed the railroad tracks to the fraternity houses would be protected, and I did not see that in the, in the minutes.
That was one of the conditions of the site plan review, so all, you know, those two conditions were there, as well as items about engineering and stormwater and stuff. So when you approved it, you approved it with all staff comments, so that would have been included in that.
You had that included?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any commission members or guests today who wish to have items on the consent agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda.
Your regular agenda this evening, the first item, is a site plan review for 409, 417, 410 through 417, and 410 and through 420 South Saluda Street for a site plan review for an approval to demolish nine duplexes and to construct nine new duplexes. And Mr. Chambers is here who can explain a little bit more about the site plan.
Currently on the property, there are nine duplexes with, for a total of eighteen units, and the applicant is proposing to demolish those units and rebuild nine duplexes for a total of eighteen units. Five on the east side, excuse me, four on the east side of Saluda, and five on the west side of Saluda. Staff has reviewed the application, and there are several staff comments. However, staff is willing to work with the, would like to work with the applicant in future development of the site plan in that there are issues with the buffer yards located to the east and the west sides of the property along the property. So staff would like to work with the applicant to reconfigure the property, the development, such that the buffer yard requirements can be met. I believe the applicant, his president, can explain the case.
All right, are there any questions for staff from the commission? Would the applicant like to come forward? Jonathan, is that on? Because sometimes it doesn't.
Mind needing to be charged?
You have a new seat.
Yeah, nice. I like this. Come in and get the, get the main seat.
Oh, now it's coming back.
It needed a woman's touch. I'm Jay Rogers, letterhead Rogers Construction Engineer. So I, it's a design-build, so I did the site plan and civil engineering and drew the houses and am going to build them, too. Like, if you have, I don't, I don't have a lot to add to what's on the application. We have good community and put it up in the comments, and we haven't heard much back from anybody. We're building certainly an improvement on the old things that are there now.
Any, anyone have any questions for the applicant? No questions.
Are they just in bad shape? That's why you're gonna...
One, one burned about a month ago, and the rest of them are about to fall in. So, yeah, they're right behind a laundromat and a Gamecock stop right there. They're pretty rundown. They've been there for a long time. And there have all been rental units with one owner, and she wanted to get rid of them. So we're building something newer, nicer, and more geared towards student housing. We've done the same floor plans on Walk 'Em On, it's been successful, so we're trying to do the same thing over here.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Then I'd like to call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Oh, wait, is there anyone else, I'm sorry, who would like to speak on this? Now I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I request to approve the site plan on 409 through 417 and 410 through 420 South Saluda Street to demolish nine duplexes and construct nine duplexes.
And is that with staff comments?
With staff comments.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion's approved.
Under other business this evening, we have brought, bringing to you the walkable 29203 pedestrian plan for an informational presentation. We'll be bringing this back to you next month for your consideration and your recommendation to city council, but we wanted to give you an update on the plan, its background, and give you a little bit of an idea of what the pointers of the plan are. I think Lee passed out a paper copy for you to look at over the next month, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lee to walk you through the plan.
Say, a number of you had the pleasure of getting introduced to this plan back in July when we had our joint Planning Commission meeting. We were in the planning process at that time, and since then, DHEC and the city and the county have been working diligently with Alta to both review the recommendations, come back with any revisions, and take those to that final draft that you see before you today. So, quick note before I forget, those plans are yours for the month. We would be very appreciative if you would bring them back at the next month's meeting so that we can then distribute them to council once y'all have made your vote. So, just, just a quick reminder. Business aside, we're so glad to be a part of this planning process. We have some folks from DHEC here today who have been integral in the planning process, and it is a DHEC grant. So this is a DHEC-funded plan. It's like a gift plan that we get. The, DHEC worked with sixteen different communities throughout the state to develop pedestrian master plans as part of a CDC grant process. So we were a lucky community, and the reason that this is a partnership with the county is that unlike any of the other DHEC plans, this takes place in an entire zip code. So on the next slide, you'll see that the 29203 zip code, which is the area in blue, is both incorporated and unincorporated Richland County, so both in the City of Columbia and unincorporated Richland County. And so that made our partnership with the Mill District Plan and with other planning processes even stronger, working through this study area here. An important thing to note, so for those of you who may not know exactly where the 29203 starts, it starts essentially north of Sunset, north of Earlwood Park, and it's a large zip code area. It is, it suffers from some, some pretty severe statistics when we talk about health and income disparities in Richland County. So this is an area of lower income, this is an area of high unemployment, and this is an area where actually thirty-two percent of the population lives below the poverty level. So when we're talking about people who walk in this area, we're talking about folks who aren't just walking for exercise, although health disparities are high in this area. We have a lot of pedestrians. When we talk about pedestrians, we're also talking about people who access transit. So folks who are walking to and from bus stops, there are a lot of folks that do not have access to personal vehicles. That rate is actually three times higher in the 29203 zip code than in Richland County as a whole. And you've got about 2.5% of folks in this area that walk to work. So all of these folks together, we have a predominantly high number of pedestrians in this region and low equity for them. So in, in the study area, you'll notice the two highlighted areas. The orange area is the North Main Planning Area, which was planned for a number of years ago and is one of the, the plans that the city has on file and has worked to implement over the years. And the red area is the Crane Creek Area, and that is a neighborhood improvement area for Richland County. So we, we took those areas and we took those existing plans, and the, the folks who were very actively engaged in their community and developed a project vision for the area. You know, vision statement, we have a vision statement in most plans, but the important thing here is that we're looking to encourage healthy lifestyles, encourage safety, facilitate transportation, recreation, and exercise. An important part of the DHEC planning process is also to make sure that people have access to healthy foods, so healthy lifestyles and activity centers, but also making sure that you may be able to walk to a grocery store or have fresh fruits and vegetables nearby you. We talk a lot, a lot about walkability, and, and this is something that y'all know a good, good bit about, but just a reminder, walkability is not just good design practice. It has some great economic, health, safety, and environmental benefits that make it a net positive for the community. We're not just talking about a place you enjoy being in, but it really can lead to economic... economic development of corridors, can lead to healthier and safer communities, and lower costs for public bodies that would have to work with health disparities. So, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the project. The plan you have before you is a lengthy plan. So, there's plenty of good information to read in there, but I think a really striking statistic is, did I skip one? Oh, sorry. So, before we get there, we, just to note that this plan does build on existing planning efforts. We have the area plans. We have Walkby Columbia, which was recently adopted. Alta, who is the consultant on this plan for DEHAC, is also the consultant we work with on Walkby Columbia. So, they have a great knowledge of the recommendations in that plan and we're able to build upon those recommendations. Some striking statistics, it's interesting to me, you know, we talk about poor drivers and we talk about how unsafe our roads are, but although we have a lot fewer pedestrians than a lot of other states, we have a lot higher traffic deaths, pedestrian deaths than other states. So, we're second in the nation, even though fewer people are walking as a percentage of the mode share. So, that's a really important takeaway here and I think what DEHAC is really focused on, building pedestrian safety plans. So, just something to keep in mind, Smart Growth America also ranks us as number seven on the pedestrian danger index as a state. Columbia's number 57 out of all municipalities that they did rank. Above you, you see the equity analysis map. So, DEHAC really focused on identifying areas that could be served, that were underserved populations. So, when we look at an equity analysis, we're looking at folks that might traditionally not have access to the goods and services that they need. So, we look at seniors, children, non-white populations, low-income households, folks with limited vehicle access, folks with linguistic issues, so, you know, maybe English is not their first language, and then SNAP recipients, so food stamps recipients. And the equity analysis map shows those areas where those populations are clustered. And you can see that they line up pretty well with the two existing planning areas that are outlined there, the North Main and the Crane Creek areas. So, it really reinforced our planning effort in that we thought we could take the recommendations of those two planning areas and really further them through this pedestrian planning process. There's also a map of healthy food access. So, I mentioned that DEHAC is very focused on making sure that folks have access to healthy foods as part of the overall healthy lifestyle. So, this shows a half-mile walk shed or a 10-minute walk to healthy food outlets. And an interesting statistic here that the plan calls out is nearly 70% of Richland County adults are overweight or obese. So, that's a pretty high number. And this is an area that it's maybe not as easier to walk in, especially in the rural areas, but along the corridors that are very vehicle-heavy. So, working on those obesity rates that are so high, this really calls that out. They've also done an active space analysis, so a half-mile walk shed to active spaces, including the future alignment of the Palmetto Trail, which you see along the river there. We do have increased inactivity and obesity rates in Richland County, so 70%, but also if you think about the economic cost, they estimate that the cost of physical inactivity per resident is about $1,900 per resident to the local community. So, just something to keep in mind on when we plan for walkability and for pedestrian safety. This plan had a robust public input session, so we had several sessions in the spring and summer of last year. DEHAC really focused on making sure that we have facilitated focus groups. So, we had some really great focus groups with residents of both of the target areas. And we met in public meetings at Eau Claire and at Meadow Lake Park as well. So, within the 29203 zip code and nearby, and folks were given the opportunity to look at maps, talk about their concerns in the area, and just really have some great public engagement as part of this plan. So, there were some area-wide recommendations. So, you know, we focused in on the North Main area and the Crane Creek area, but overall, we looked at things that both Richland County and the city of Columbia could do to better pedestrian safety in the area. We're talking about adopting a Vision Zero policy. A Vision Zero policy is, like you see those lookout for pedestrians signs that the state has, the billboards. The state has a Vision Zero plan and a lot of localities are talking about adopting this as well, and that would be to see zero traffic deaths in the future. So, having some targetable goals, looking at expanding on our existing bicycle and pedestrian counts, working with DEHAC on their Healthy Corner Store Initiative, where they locate fruits and vegetables inside existing corner stores that may not otherwise be serving healthy food, but where they're within a walkable area for folks. Talking about Farm to School and Farm to Institution is another DEHAC partnership with the Department of Ag. And adopting engineering standards is another recommendation. So, changing how we look at our internal policies and internal standards so that when we're developing, you know, new sidewalks or that sort of thing, we're looking at recommendations that would match up with walkability. So, specific to the North Main area, we looked at the opportunities and constraints within the area. Y'all are probably a little bit more familiar with the North Main area than the Crane Creek area. And North Main has a lot of, it's a more urbanized area, so it's got a lot more access to parks. They're close to Earlwood Park, which is outside of the zip code but directly adjacent. They've got Hyatt Park, they've got community gardens. So, there are a lot more walkable locations within the North Main area, but the corridors are vehicle-heavy, there are railroad crossings. There is, the consultants noticed that there was a lot of folks that parked on the sidewalks. So, they're preventing pedestrians from having the ADA accessibility in that area. And there is a perception of safety or unsafety in the area as well. During our focus groups, we heard a lot of desires for lighting, there may have been some loose dogs, that sort of thing, where people felt unsafe walking alone or walking at night. So, the plan made a series of recommendations through maps. So, we have both spot and corridor improvement recommendations in the map, which is difficult to see in this slide, but really focusing on where you could see improved crossings, either mid-block or at intersections, where you could see connections to existing and proposed greenways, where you could see either road diet opportunities or other corridor enhancements, where there would be additional bike lanes or pedestrian infrastructure that would help serve that walkability goal. They focused in as far as very specific recommendations, where they really took the time to visualize those on two points for each of the study areas. So, in the North Main area, we're looking at Monticello Road. That section of Monticello Road is right by the Family Dollar, which you can, is the little white building in the upper left there. The existing crosswalk is higher visibility, but there have been some pedestrian accidents there. There have, the speed of the road is a little bit higher than you would see, and it is an area that a lot of folks walk to. So, they're talking about, the recommendation is to add bike lanes. Those bike lanes would help to buffer the sidewalks, the pedestrians on the sidewalks, and it would also work to slow the traffic in the area. And you can see a higher visibility crossing there as well. On Frye Road, this is an area that is located in a key link between Farrah Road and North Main, and it's an access point to a grocery store, to a park, Fairhold Park, and to Pendergrass Fairhold School. So, improving safety there using high-visibility crosswalk, a speed device, so you can slow folks down, give them that visual trigger in that area is important. And then also you see sharrows on the roadway and certainly improved pedestrian access on the bike or on the sidewalk there. So, I do want to talk briefly about the Crane Creek Study Area, though it is in the unincorporated area, because this is an area where we are directly adjacent to the southern portion of Crane Creek. And in fact, one of the recent annexations is within the Crane Creek Neighborhood Improvement Area. So, that area that was annexed on, or considered for the annexation on our consent agenda today is actually within the Crane Creek area. So, as we move forward with the annexation, we want to make sure that y'all are aware and we don't just kind of skip over the Crane Creek area. So, Crane Creek has recently gone through their neighborhood planning efforts, and so they have a very active neighborhood association. It's actually several neighborhoods that make up the Crane Creek Planning Area. So, they're very focused on seeing change in that area. And that's one of the, when we talk about community stakeholders as an opportunity, that's really what we're referring to there. Crane Creek, though, is more rural. The neighborhoods are separated from one another by roadways and they don't see that connectivity, although they do have parks and schools in the area. So, the consultant made a series of corridor and spot recommendations for the Crane Creek area as well. And we focused on two specific areas, Blue Ridge Terrace, which is kind of a spine for the community, and looking at that as adding sidewalks. It could be a greenway spur that provides connection to the school and really bringing in ADA compliance with the sidewalks that are added. We see a lot of network gaps. So, when we're talking about network gaps, we're talking about you might be in a wheelchair or pushing a stroller and you can get only so far before you have to go out into the road to navigate those obstacles. And the second priority project is Fairfield Road. So, Fairfield Road is located near a school. It's, it really is overdesigned at this stage. It's, the spike lanes are way too much to actually handle the traffic that's on there. So, they recommended a road diet, slowing it down, improving the conditions as well. So, with that, if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know it's a big plan and y'all have some excellent reading to do in the next month.
Are you coming back next month?
I will be here next month to answer any questions you have. Yes. And if you have them in the meantime, you're welcome to get in touch with us too. Yeah, of course.
Your last item for the evening is a discussion about continuing education items, and Andrea Wolf will be talking about continuing ed for the upcoming year. You can sit or you can stand, I don't care.
Most of you know that we have, and I don't even know if I need this, I talk loud, but most of you know that we have to do continuing ed every year. We do have some new commission members, and I believe John went over this in your orientation with you. Ford has already told me which sessions he would attend. I will be sending out an email. I have the information now. I can give all of you a sheet if you'd like and you can look it over as well for the sessions that we have proposed for 2017. The six-hour session is in two three-hour segments, and Jamie, I believe you'll have to go ahead and do that. Everyone else has done that. But the rest of you, as you actively sit on the board, do have to complete three hours of continuing ed. If you do not, there is a chance that you will not be able to sit on the board until you complete it. So, it's very, very important. It's done for the year, and I would advise everybody to do it early, get it out of the way. We do have three dates for that, and I can give you that. As I said, if you'd like, I'll give you the sheet when you walk out and I will email it. If a session comes up that I find out about, because, you know, some of them are a little bit tedious, well, go ahead and I'll let you know that you can attend it. And we also have some, we're trying to work with staff to have it at our office, so it'll be local for you to attend. So...
Check also, remember us last year, Dale actually, a few programs, organizations that attending conferences or whatever it may be apply to those same hours?
There are some conferences you may attend. It does have to have criteria. The sessions have to pertain to planning items as they, if there is a conference you attend and we cannot, if we can't determine through Central Midlands and myself, when I funnel it through them, that it would go ahead and qualify for the hours, we can go ahead and forward it for review. Sometimes there are some sessions that do not qualify. They do, they have included for landscape, but I don't know, y'all really don't deal with landscaping, with landscape architecture that does qualify for now and it interweaves. There are exemptions that some of you can do if anyone is an attorney, if you're AICP, if you do have a master's in planning or a master's in another field that is related to planning, you can be exempt from attending. So, if you think you do, if you want to go ahead and provide me with that information, I will forward it on and we can review it. I've had a few people do that and unfortunately, it didn't qualify them, but a few did. But if there is a conference that you know of, send me that information that you might know and we'll see if we can get it to qualify for that, and then that would go ahead and take care of you for the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other business, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
See you next month.